Good afternoon, everyone. The time is now 5:30 PM and I am going to call this meeting to order. It has been duly posted as required by state law. And we do have a quorum. We are going to move forward with the invocation. I ask Commissioner Kinsley to lead us in that invocation.
Lord God our hearts, our minds, and the spirit of fairness, right thought, and speech, impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
Now, the pledge?
(inaudible)
Mark, if you read the conflict of interest, please?
Yes, Mayor. Under state law, a conflict of interest exists if a council member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in the discussion nor vote on the agenda item. Are there any known conflicts of interest to disclose at this time?
None.
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 Nope.
None.
None.
Thank you. Moving on to citizen communication. Amanda, do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, ma'am. I have Donna Ray Leonard, Donna Ray Leonard, and 4309 North Minnesota Street, Harlingen. And her topic is city trash collection.
Yes. Dawn Ray?
Good evening. This is in regards to the upcoming budget considerations and the special commission meeting held on March 2nd, 2023, with a presentation by Public Works Director Oscar Garcia. Commissioner Morales asked if anyone could identify any areas where one trash pickup per week would be feasible. Great question. I live in Sunshine Estates. For years, this has been a point of contention that our 55-plus park has three trash days per week, one for Combs and two for Harlingen. We have 304 homes. Of that, 108 are Combs, 196 are Harlingen. Approximately 50% of these homes have residents year-round, so we're half-full for one half of the year. For a one-to-two-person household, once-a-week trash pickup is more than sufficient. The large trucks tend to tear up our roads in our difficult-to-maneuver-in spots. Being as we are half-full during half of the year, we see no value in twice-weekly pickups in our park. There are numerous 55-plus parks in Harlingen that do not need twice-weekly trash pickup, and these parks are in every district. Interestingly enough, according to the Public Works Director, Harlingen and Mission are the only two municipalities in the valley with two trash days. So how can we realize some savings if we go citywide? Some of the cost-cutting measures would include saving gas for the trucks, saving on maintenance time and wear and tear of the vehicles, savings on the carbon footprint thus doing our part, save on driver fatigue getting drivers more rest, savings of $108,000 in overtime costs. Less trips to the dump mean more savings in transportation and dumping costs. These savings will provide us room for growth as we receive more residents in the coming years. We have heard the concerns about how much everything costs, and the solution was to throw more money at the problem. We do not need to hire more people and purchase more trash trucks. Oscar Garcia stated, "We want to service our customers more effectively." Indeed. Harlingen customers would appreciate that. The savings for the city could be significant, and our customers could possibly enjoy a small reduction on their monthly bill. We all need to tighten our belts, and the city is no exception. Let's give our citizens a break. My solution is a citywide, once-a-week trash pickup model. To be fair, run the numbers and present. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leonard.
The next one is Raymond Reyes, 706 Non-Tucker Drive, and the topic is improvement, working towards a better Harlingen in real time.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Raymond Reyes, 706 Non-Tucker Drive. Basically, I think there's a lot of different things that are going on. Again, I'm around a lot more than I used to be, and I didn't even know you had that budget meeting, which was kind of weird, but I'll talk to my people about that. I've been having issues with trash in my alleyway and stuff. You know, we've been here a long time. I called so they could see about maybe putting back another camera. Then I was told that they moved that camera around, so I don't know how many cameras we have. But I was out there today at one of my properties because I had a business meeting with some other individuals. And right by my dumpster, there was a whole bunch of stuff that's not even ours there. So I told my staff, you know, just go ahead and deal with it. The thing is, because it's a venue and we throw shows there, by the time we actually utilize it, it's already full. So nicely enough, we've been there long enough that the other of my neighbors allowed me to put their stuff. And now I have Luna across the street, so I put stuff in there as well. But I think, you know, as everything, we need to always look at everything with a fine-toothed comb. I know it can be very tedious. I do this on a daily basis. For corporate companies, thank God, I just do it from home now. But there's always a way to improve on the way we do things. We just need to actually be more aware and be more thorough and stuff. Again, it can be very tedious, but the citizens have elected you guys, the mayor, commissioner, the appointed city manager, and the staff to do what's best for Harlingen, not just for certain individuals. I mean, I get involved in all kinds of other things that I reach out directly via email to other things that I think might need to be addressed and looked at. But I think as a whole, if we just keep doing positive progress for the right reasons, then we should be okay. You know, we'll turn the corner and brighter days will come. But on the same token, if we don't, then it's not going to be such a cheery ride as we progress. But one way or another, progress is coming. It's just, let's make it a positive experience for everybody in Harlingen because we've got a good thing going on here. Let's just not, you know, throw it away and get passed up anymore. It's our time, I think. We have a star in the center logo. It's time for us to actually make that known and stuff. Because, you know, I do a lot of business in a lot of different places, and people have heard of Harlingen. And I always defend Harlingen, even though I'm from San Antonio, because, you know, I live here now and stuff. So I just think that we need to make sure we do the best we can, no matter what the cost is. You know, friends is friends, but business is business. If there's anything we run into business, then we need to do it for the right reasons. Thank you, and you all have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
The next one is Mr. Desi Martinez, 1806 Haverford Avenue, and Harlingen Waterworks Parking Lot.
Ditto. Thank you. 1806 Haverford Boulevard, Desi speaking. As you can see in what I handed out to you, the eligible primary jobs for 4A and 4B, plus 4B, the extension of other activities are allowed as community improvement. That's why we call it Harlingen Community Improvements Board. Secondly, on what the Harlingen Waterworks, being a board member before Harlingen Waterworks came up then too, parking. But parking is an issue throughout the inner city, in our urban area, and it's part of the problem why we can't get more commerce into this inner-city market. And we had 10 years ago also being a member of EDC 4A Board, as you know, Harlingen Economic Drill Corporation. On second page, they're asking for a generator and parking space. That's always been the problem, not just for them, for everybody downtown. We had 10 years ago, if not more, given a concept, and you can see the locations and the number of square footage is 166,700 square feet of facilities just in that little area. And I denote it like a... The next page shows you that the EDC paid for that parking space next to the Point for public use. The other one's owned by Texas State Bank, which is now owns the facility across the street. But the Rees and the SOG building and the Point and the Harlingen Waterworks building is a tremendous number of facilities that can be available for international trade, scientific research, engineers, others. And we had proposed to them, to the EDC at that time, it was put under the bus, if I may, and that we should concentrate there to do a parking, parking, as you see, which the VA has a parking area, four stories there, at least three, two, and one open at the top to provide additional parking for that entire area, and designate that area for financial, scientific, and technicals allowed by the law, so we could promote it. At that time, we were at the Chamber of Commerce, EDC, they moved out there and they forgot about the downtown. The downtown is an essential part of the core, the heart of this area to develop. Ask what's MacGalen, look what they've done. We haven't invested, and the 4B Board can do that by building a garage that's publicly-owned and managed, working with these five individuals. It's time to stop spinning the wheel and do it right and invest our money correctly. I ask your support.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
We have another one. Mayor Brian Taylor doesn't want to be called, and it's on community education.
Does not want to be called?
No.
Brian, I'm sorry?
Brian Taylor.
Is there a Brian Taylor present? Is there anyone outside?
(inaudible).
All right.
Okay, the next one? The next one is Hector Ruiz, 3102 Hayne Drive, and does not want to be called either.
Thank you, Amanda. Sid, ma'am. All right. Okay, thank you for that. Moving on to our presentation and proclamation. So first up, we have the proclamation for the Red Cross. Christina?
Good evening, Mayor, Commission, and our audience, as well as city management and staff. Today, we have some very special guests with us from the American Red Cross South Texas Chapter, and the mayor is presenting them with a proclamation today. And as we meet, as we read this proclamation, we ask them to stand up. I know they are here today. So today, joining us, we have the South Texas Executive Director, Dr. David Luna, as well as some volunteers that commit their time to improving and being of service to others, including Mike Taylor, Dahlia Tovar, Elvial Anis, and Kayla Gonzalez. And the mayor and city commission are presenting them with the following proclamation. After the proclamation is read, we would love to have a photo with you all up front as the mayor presents the proclamation. So the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas during American Red Cross Month in March, we celebrated the humanitarian spirit of Harlingen, Texas, and reaffirm our commitment to helping ensure no one faces a crisis alone. Caring for one another is at the heart of our community and exemplified by the people of Harlingen, whose simple acts of kindness through the Red Cross provide help and hope in people's most difficult moments. Continuing the life-saving legacy of Clara Barton, who founded the organization more than 140 years ago. Whereas every day, these ordinary individuals lend a helping hand to make an extraordinary difference for our neighbors in need, whether it's providing emergency shelter, food, and comfort for families displaced by home fires and other disasters, donating life-saving blood for cancer patients, accident victims, and people with sickle cell disease and other life-threatening conditions, supporting military members and veterans along with their families and caregivers through the unique challenges of service, using vital skills like first aid and CPR to help others survive medical emergencies, or delivering international humanitarian aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by crisis around the world. Whereas their support, volunteerism, and generous donations are critical to our community's resilience. We hereby proclaim, we hereby recognize this month of March in honor of all those who fulfill Clara's noble words. You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it, and ask everyone to join this commitment. Now, therefore, the mayor of Harlingen, Norma Sepulveda, by virtue of authority vested in her, do hereby proclaim March 2023 as Red Cross Month.
Thank you for your service. Thank you for your commitment. If you want to stand right up here, and we'll get the commission to join me, and we will take a picture.[960.43][960.43](laughter) (inaudible) We have another round of applause. And next, we have a proclamation for our Citizen Police Academy Alumni Association. Christina?
Yes. So the Citizens Police Academy joins us here today. I'm sure you may notice who they are by their t-shirts.[968.43][968.43](laughter) So we are very happy to have them joining us here at our city commission meeting as they celebrate 30 years since its inception. And I hear they are going to celebrate very soon with a dinner at Los Osados. So before then, we will present them. The mayor and commission are presenting you all with the following proclamation. If you can stand up while it's read so everyone can recognize you. Whereas the Citizens Police Academy was held in 1993, several graduates formed the CPA Alumni Association to further the mission, and the Harlingen Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association is celebrating its 30th anniversary. Whereas the city of Harlingen is proud of its Citizen Police Academy alumni graduates, an organization of informed citizens who serve the community and the Harlingen Police Department. Providing service to others is the hallmark of their character. They volunteer with pride and credibility as they support local law enforcement without monetary compensation. Whereas the Citizens Police Academy Association is one of Harlingen's greatest assets, they assist citizens in learning about the role of the police department and its many functions, services, and capabilities. The CPA Academy cultivates informed citizens who meet HPD face-to-face in a neutral, friendly setting. This reduces fears and misconceptions resulting in conflict or misunderstanding. Whereas since its inception, some of the significant community events that thrive due to CPA are National Night Out, Blues on the Hill, HPD Christmas Toy Distribution, Shop with a Cop, Lighting of the Year Royal, and the annual Christmas Parade. Whereas the CPA Alumni Association places a vital part of Harlingen's future as a caring and productive community. Their dedicated and valuable resources devoting talent, life skills, and countless hours of service. The CPA alumni are motivated by simply helping their fellow citizens and making their community a better place to live and work. Now, therefore, mayor of the city of Harlingen, Norma Sepulveda, does hereby proclaim the month of March, the month of March 2023, as Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association Month. How about a round of applause for them?[1067.21][1067.21](applause) And now, we ask you all to come up front and receive the proclamation from our mayor. If you want to join me, Commissioner?
Yeah, sure. (laughter)
Hi, I'm here.
Come on, George.
Come on, George.
If everyone can look right here. She's going to give us a countdown. One, two, three. You got one more. One, two. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much for all of your incredible hardware.
I'm sorry, I'm going to take more photos if this is my phone.
Can we give them another round of applause as they exit? Okay, moving right along. Next, we have the proclamation for Women's History Month, and it is my honor and pleasure to read this proclamation. But as I do, I would ask for all of our directors from the city of Harlingen to please stand to be recognized. If you would like to come stand up here so we can recognize you, along with Ms. Amanda. Don't be shy.
Thank you, ladies. Whereas, after being petitioned by the National Women's History Project, Congress passed a resolution designating the month of March 1987 as the first National Women's History Month, and American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless ways. And whereas the purpose of Women's History Month is to celebrate and recognize the vital contributions and specific achievements women have made over the course of American history in a variety of fields. And whereas, American women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every area of life of our nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. And whereas, women from every walk of life have made possible the growth and strength of our country in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, particularly important in the establishment of early charitable humanitarian and cultural institutions in our nation, served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement, and courageously served our country in the military. And whereas, American women have been leaders not only in securing their rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist, abolitionist, sorry, abolitionist, in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. Whereas, the city of Harlingen recognizes and applauds the women in our community who have devoted their lives and talents to producing fine art and reports, pursuing truth and reflecting society decade after decade. And whereas, in honoring the 36 National International Women's Month, we support the 2023 theme of celebrate women who tell our stories, recognizing women of past and present who have been active in all types of media and storytelling. Now, therefore, I, Norma Sepulveda, mayor of the city of Harlingen, the first woman of the city of Harlingen, it is my pleasure to proclaim, sorry, hey, this is a big deal,[1366.28][1366.28](laughter), National Women's History Month, and to be able to present this to all of the wonderful women of the city of Harlingen that make our city the best that it can be. And it really is really moving for me, so sorry about all of the missteps here, but thank you all. So if we can get everybody...[1388.51][1388.51](applause)
Thank you. We can take a picture.
As much as we love a man who should be in...
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
I promise the rest will go smoothly. All right. Item two, approval of minutes. We have item two, a regular meeting of February 1, 2023. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item three, we have the consent agenda, items A through C. Is there anything that needs to be taken out or amended? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Moving on to new business. Item four, public hearing impossible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit to allow an unmanned battery storage facility in general retail district to be...[1440.33]
Wherever. Okay. Thank you, ladies. Okay. Whereas, after being petitioned by the National Women's History Project, Congress passed a resolution designating the month of March 1987 as the first National Women's History Month, and American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless ways. And whereas, the purpose of Women's History Month is to celebrate and recognize the vital contributions and specific achievements women have made over the course of American history in a variety of fields. And whereas, American women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every area of life of our nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. And whereas, women from every walk of life have made possible the growth and strength of our country in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. Particularly important in the establishment of early charitable humanitarian and cultural institutions in our nation. Served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement, and courageously served our country in the military. And whereas, American women have been leaders, not only in securing their rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist, abolitionist? Sorry. Abolitionist, in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. Whereas, the City of Harlingen recognizes and applauds the women in our community who have devoted their lives and talents to producing fine art and reports, pursuing truth and reflecting society decade after decade. And whereas, in honoring the 36 National International Women's Month, we support the 2023, 2023 theme of Celebrate Women Who Tell Our Stories. Recognizing women of past and present who have been active in all types of media and storytelling. Now therefore, I, Norma Sepulveda, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, the first woman of the City of Harlingen, it is my pleasure to proclaim, sorry. Hey, this is a big deal. National Women's History Month, and to be able to present this to all of the wonderful women of the City of Harlingen that make our, our city the best that it can be. And it really is really moving for me. So, sorry about all of the missteps here. But thank you all. So, if we can get everybody. I promise the rest will go smoothly. All right. Item two, approval of minutes. We have item two, a regular meeting of February 1, 2023. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Item three, we have the consent agenda. Items A through C, is there anything that needs to be taken out or amended? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Moving on to new business. Item four, public hearing impossible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit to allow an unmanned battery storage facility in general retail district to be located along the east side of Loop 499, being 277 feet north of Grimes Road, bearing a legal description of tract A out of the proposed Citrus Flats subdivision being 8.27 acres out of Block 8, Harlingen Land and Water Company subdivision, and the applicant is Dan Ditto Black Mountain Energy Storage Attachment.
Mayor, City Commissioners, a good evening. So, we have a proposed battery storage facility on, the location is along the east side of Loop 499, and just north of Grimes Road. The zoning is a general retail district, which allows this type of business with a special use permit. This is an aerial photograph of the property where this project is proposed. The subdivision covers the whole area to the, to Grimes. So, it's a, it's a two-lot subdivision. So, they're leaving the, the corner for a proposed future business at the very corner, and the rest, the battery storage. There's an AEP substation right here on the other side of Loop 499. So, the project is proposed to connect to the AEP, AEP substation. And this is near, near the airport, of course. So, this is the proposed site plan for the project. So, these are the, the battery boxes that are proposed with a substation here. And this is the corner lot that are leaving vacant for a possible commercial project. They're proposing a detention area along the east side. There's a ditch, a drainage along the east and north side. In the initial meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commissions, there were concerns about the aesthetics of the project along this major commercial corridor. So, the applicant had provided, subsequently provided a rendering of what they're proposing along the boundary of Loop 499, which is, which is an eight-foot black wall all along the boundary of, of the, of the commercial corridor, with the proposed landscaping and spaces for murals. So, we, because of the proposed black wall, you will not be able to see these battery boxes from the, from the commercial corridor. Initially, so here's a diagram of the wall along Loop 499, and also along the north side. In the subsequent Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the, the board brought up that they would, they would like also the wall on, on the south side of the project. And so, the applicant agreed. And the next day, they, they provided a diagram showing what the Planning and Zoning Commission requested along the south side. So, in essence, if you're driving on Loop 499 going north or south, you will not be able to see these batteries because of the black wall on all sides, and then landscaping all along Loop 499 between the wall and the property line. So, here's a photo provided by the applicant of the, of the proposed, an example of what the boxes will look inside the, inside the property. So, this is the second project. One was approved, was approved last year by a different company. So, the one from last year is, if some of you were here and some of you were not here, when this was approved last year. So, this is on Tucker Road. It's about a quarter mile south of Lincoln. This one is, is an one-acre property. The one before you right now is a six-acre. It's a much bigger property. This is a recent photo of the construction. And this project is anticipated to be completed in June of this year. Here's a photo of the, of the Loop 499 property. The proposed subdivision with the two lots leaving the corner for a future commercial. Memo from the applicant explaining the project survey. And then we have a, a letter from the EDC recommending approval to the project. And that, that letter is in your pocket. So, staff recommends approval subject to compliance with all ordinances and regulations and fire departments regulations and building inspections, and subject to that black wall that was mentioned to be built along the north, south, and west side of the project with landscaping between the wall and Loop 499 and the, and the property line. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on February 8, and no one spoke in opposition to the SUP request. The board chair expressed much opposition to the project since in his opinions, in his opinion, it will not be the type of development that should be allowed along a major commercial corridor. During the meeting of our March 8, after some discussion, the board approved it unanimously. Subject to the adjustments that the applicant already made to the diagrams.
Javier, did, did we get an opinion from our airport director?
Yes, the airport director was there on March 8, and he had no issues with this project.
Ma'am, if I may?
Yes.
I realize this is an unmanned site with batteries. Is there, what is the frequency of inspection of this site by an order?
I defer to the applicant because these type of projects are not, we will do inspections in the, in the construction phases. But after the project is complete, the city will not do inspections anymore. But the state, the state may do some inspections. So, I defer to the applicant to, to answer that, that question on subsequent inspections by, by the state. And the applicant is here, and he will be able to answer.
He is here?
Yeah, the applicant is here. So, during the public hearing, he's proposing to.
Yes.
Yes, he's proposing to give a PowerPoint, and then he will answer any questions that he may have, that you may have.
Do, do you have any information on, and if not, we can ask the, the applicant on the taxes that will be generated?
Yes, so, the proposed investment is 100 million for the, I just heard that from the applicant today. So, it's a proposed 100 million investment in the six-acre property that will generate between 550 and 600,000 in property taxes per year. It's a substantial funds that will come in.
Is, is these taxes based on the value of the equipment or the, of the batteries?
Yes, so there's a, if this SUP is approved, the company will purchase the property. And so, eventually, there will be a building permit. And so, in that building permit, they will put a value, which as of today, they're saying is going to be 100 million. So, then that, that building permit goes to the Cameron County Appraisal District. And so, eventually, they're going to adjust the value of the property to reflect that investment. So, then we will get property taxes each year based on that investment amount.
Solely based on the reported equipment or batteries and, and the, the rest that is located there on that property? Based on self-reporting of what is on the property? Is that correct?
The Cameron County Appraisal District, they will, they will do their own appraisal. So, they'll, they'll get a report from the building permit. But many times, the appraisal district will determine that it should be higher. So, they'll, you know, they may say, no, it's more than that. So, then the applicant cannot protest, right? So, there's a process to protest. But the initial base is on, on that building permit report.
And just to notify the commission, the building permit will not be for 100 million because that includes the property that's going to be delivered to the site. The permit itself will be for the, the site work that's going to be done on the foundation, any electrical work to connect it, and then the wall. And that's it.
Correct.
Subsequent to that, once the equipment is installed, then the appraisal district will determine the value of what that is. And that's how we'll get the, the appraised value.
So, would it be a little premature for us to, to rely on that number of property taxes?
It's, it's hard to tell. There, at this point, they're saying, because the consultant checked with his peers on how much these boxes are going to cost.
Okay.
So, what they're saying at this, at this time is that they're proposing an investment of 100 million. The appraisal district may say it should be more than that, right? So.
Is there any depreciation on the batteries that are going to be stored there?
There probably will be. And so, I, I defer to the applicant to answer that.
Thank you. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, we, last year, we approved a previous project, as you said, Javier. Smaller in nature, but the batteries are safe. This is all, this is all science. Everything's easy.
And have we followed up on that one to see what the taxes look like?
No, it's a much, it's just a small, a much smaller project. I can do some research on how much that permit was because for that one, we already issued a building permit. That project should, is supposed to be completed in June of this year. So, we'll, we'll have more information.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other questions from the commission?
Oh, no.
No, okay. At this time, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak for or against the adoption of this ordinance?
Good evening, Commissioner and Mayor. I'm Nick Encilio. I live at 109 East Austin Avenue. And I'm the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And this item was before us twice. And we tabled it the first time because we didn't really get the information that you're asking about, Mayor. Specifically, how are the taxes going to be assessed? It's a property value or is it an inventory? If it's a depreciating asset, within every year, that gets smaller and smaller. So, those answers weren't really addressed by the applicant at the time. And I'll tell you, the first meeting we had, it was 70 million dollars. Now, it was 80 million. Now, it's 100 million. So, that, that's a pretty big slide. It's the same property, the same six acres, yet the value somehow has gone up to 100 billion. I also think that there's no job creation, zero jobs. We're going to have a brick wall along our major thoroughfare, South Airport. And I think our citizens are going to be expecting something really great when they start seeing those equipment move and dirt, and to realize that it's, it's just going to be a very large, large battery storage. Tucker is one, one acre. Different project, it's often, it's kind of back in there, a little bit hidden. It's not off, again, our major thoroughfare off Loop 499. This facility might be great closer to port. The industrial park, there's other areas. The EDC can definitely speak to those. They also have the industrial park that they also manage as well. So, again, for the public, I think that once, once the dirt starts moving, everyone's going to be wondering what's going on. And it's just going to be a battery camp with an eight-foot brick wall with some Bulgavia in front of it. And I just hope that we can do better than that. So, I continue to stand opposed to that. I think there's a lot of information we still need to get from this item. And I hope you'll, you'll consider, well, I hope you'll deny it, but at the very least, table it for more concrete information. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Beverly Loftus, Harlingen EDC. So, I know that there's been some concerns, as Nick shared, about the, you know, the perception of a battery storage facility going up there off of 499. So, I reached out to our retail consultants to check with them to see what the likelihood of that property being turned into commercial or retail type of use. And I just wanted to take a little bit of time to read what their response was. This came from Kelly Koffer. He is the founder and CEO of The Retail Coach. And so, his response is, "The residential neighborhoods west of 499, between Rio Honda Road and Harrison Avenue, will always gravitate west to South 77 Sunshine Strip and Morgan Boulevard for shopping, dining, due to the abundance of options. With the traffic count being about 10,900 vehicles per day on 499 going north and south, mostly of that is commuter traffic. Certainly declines, which declines in the evening and the nighttime. Restaurants need lunch and nighttime business. Due to the light industrial zoning east of 499, the subject site will never have population density that restaurants desire. The northeast corner of 499 in Grimes, which is the two-acre corner, could potentially include a branded restaurant, such as like a convenience store with a burger place or a hot dog place or something like that. The industrial development east of, off of 499 also needs to occur in order to have an adequate base of employees. The subject site will always be lunch dominant that caters to commuters and industrial employee base. The opportunities for restaurants are dependent on the industrial development, which would be east of 499. The timeline could take anywhere from five to 10 years." As the, the applicant will share later, the property has been vacant already or had, had been listed for five years with little, little approach from businesses or developers. And so, we wanted to just share kind of what that, that would look like as a commercial space.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Dan Ditto with Black Mountain Energy Storage, and excited to share with you all our Citrus Flats best project here for the City of Harlingen. Hard to see, but as, as it's been addressed, we have six and a half acres under land control at the corner of Grimes and 499. And these projects are really site-specific. And there's a, a reason that we chose this location. That is because of the AEP Oleander Substation that's right across 499. There's a proximity issue with getting too far from the substation. And it's highly beneficial to, you know, to avoid any outages or, or issues with, with the line crossing the highway to be closer to the substation. We are already working with AEP. We've been working with them for about six months to get an interconnection agreement as well as coordinating with ERCOT. So, we're far along the process. Right now, we're expecting to start construction Q4 of 2024, and then be operational by, you know, Q2, Q3 of 2025. PowerPoint came out a little, little off on here, but, so, just a broader overview of the benefits that this project does bring to the City of Harlingen. There's a lot of new wind and solar developments, as you all are well aware, just around, around the lower Rio Valley Grand, Rio Valley Grand region. And what that has done is caused a lot of congestion in the area. There's not enough transmission infrastructure to bring all that power into different areas. Instead, it's going along one corridor and then spreads out throughout the city through distribution lines. And without having enough transmission infrastructure to bring that power to where it needs to go, it caused a lot of congestion, caused a lot of issues. That's what causes, you know, strains in the grid where not only is it rough on the infrastructure, but it also, it wastes a lot of electricity that's coming through there. So, if it's not being used and it gets congested for too long, it dissipates and it's, you know, it's not being used. So, that's what we've identified is this area. And where the substation is, it's a highly congested area where it needs an off-take to store power for a significant amount of time. And I, the, the project that we're proposing is 100-megawatt facility and 200-megawatt hours. So, to compare that to, you know, to put that in simple terms, basically, that's, it could power 50,000 homes for two-hour duration. So, it is significant. The other project that you all approved last year, I believe it was just under 10 megawatts. So, it's a lot, you know, it's not a utility scale. It's more of a community storage facility. So, this is utility scale and has a lot more storage capabilities. As it has been mentioned, and I'd like to address why the capital cost estimates on the project have changed. the project have changed, it is now projected to be $100-million-dollar facility, all-in, transformers, batteries, construction, getting it operational. And it was, you know, we were thinking around 80, and that's usually what 100-megawatt facility is. With a two-hour duration, it is, that raises the cost, as well as there's a lot of supply chain issues. I'm not a procurement guy, so after talking with them, you know, it's, that's, that's the new number that we've, we've come up with. So it is a, you know, big investment in the community. And here in the next couple of slides, I'll break down exactly what our estimate is on taxes. So this right here gives you just a picture of what it looks like inside of these containers. So lithium-ion batteries, and this technology is rapidly evolving every year. And it's, it's really exciting how far along it's come. Say that art technology, and it's, it's gotten so advanced that you're able to put, you know, 100-megawatts storage on six acres, like we're doing here. Whereas if you're doing 100-megawatt, you know, solar farm, it's 500-plus acres. So we're able to store that much capacity on six acres, where if you're going to generate it from solar, you need 500-plus acres. So proximity to the community is a, is a huge, huge deal, and it's, you know, really, we see it as something that's very, very exciting for, for the city. One other benefit I did want to mention about battery, this facility, is it reduces electricity costs by providing energy to the grid during periods of high demand. It is an unmanned facility, but it's operated off-site, so there's people on it 24/7 dealing with AEP and ERCOT to know when to discharge these batteries as needed. And it's an instant, they instantly respond to, to these issues. And stop me anytime if you all have questions during this. Here's the facility, or the subject parcel again. And Beverly did a great job kind of explaining the history of the land, the lay of it. We're working with a local family that has owned that property for quite a while, had on the market for five-plus years, little to no interest on purchasing the property until we came along and got our contract. So the property has been, it's farmed, it's under ag exempt, so, you know, little to no revenue has been taxed off this property for the city. With our $100-million-dollar capital cost investment on the project, on the property, we've done tax models on what we, you know, for, for both City of Harlingen, ISD, and Cameron County. And we're estimating over the next 20 years, $20 million in tax revenue. Five of that would be directly to the City of Harlingen. And Mayor, you are right about depreciation, but as the technology evolves, it might be the case where five years down the road, you gotta, you know, keep up with the times and install new batteries, which, you know, that's just kind of a decision that will be made down the road. But I mean, if we kept the same batteries throughout a 20-year period, we're looking at $5 million directly into the City of Harlingen. $20 million total between Cameron County, ISD, and Port of Harlingen, and City of Harlingen.
Question, what's the average lifespan of these battery units?
It's about 20 to 30 years. But yeah, as I was saying, the, the technology rapidly changes, where, you know, you could, it might make sense to replace batteries at some time.
Between today and construction, technology will change.
Right, exactly. Yes, sir. Yeah, it's, it's rapidly evolving. Our procurement guys are busy trying to pick out, you know, exactly the technology that we're going to be using. Yeah, so as Javier was explaining, the aesthetics became something important to us after the second P&amp;Z meeting, where we really wanted to, you know, make it where when you're coming out of the airport, you're not seeing just a bunch of, you know, steel containers with batteries. The mural, I thought it was a great idea, and, you know, happy to, however you all want to design that, to, as a dedication to the City of Harlingen. I think there's a lot of various ideas that we could, of what, what we could design there.
And where will you tap in to the electric lines? There's a power line east of there, and the substation across the street west of there.
Yes, sir. So we have, there's an open bay, let me try to go back to the... Okay. So there's an open bay here on the north side of the Oleander AEP Substation, and that's where we'll be interconnecting. So, I mean, basically, overhead line right over 499, already been talking with TechSight about how that crossing will work, and what all we need to provide, and then go straight across the street, go south, and interconnect into Oleander Substation.
And if I may point out, somebody's monitoring this from someplace, but there will be construction jobs for, what, six, eight months?
Absolutely.
And use of massive amounts of concrete, and then copper, and, and these are higher, higher-tech jobs.
Exactly. Yes, sir.
Or skill sets, let's say.
Right, so yeah, local contractors will definitely be utilized when developing the site. Cranes, I'm sure there's a crane salesman around here that we'll, we'll be working with. But yeah, I mean, it's all, all the, the six to eight months, you're exactly right, of construction timeline, that will be, you know, utilized by the local workforce.
I have a question. I was kind of just looking up and to see if there was any others in our area. Have you, I know you've looked in, in other surrounding counties, have you, is there any that you've started, or would this be your first, first site in South Texas?
In, in South Texas, no, we have a project that's, we're about to get to NTP Notice Proceed with construction in Roma. We also have a project in Eagle Pass and Del Rio. So along, along the border, we're, we're very prevalent. There's other, other storage companies that have projects, I believe, in Brownsville and McAllen. But once you kind of have your spot, and you're, you're interconnecting, and have your interconnection agreement signed with the utility company, you can't, that area is, it's sufficient for, for that area. So it's not necessary to have multiple of these facilities yet in the City of Harlingen or surrounding areas, but they, they are starting to pop up.
If I may, I think you heard my question earlier, on an unmanned site like this, how often does an actual human come and wander around inside of it and see what's happening?
Yeah, so usually, it's about once a month, but I mean, depending, there's, it's constantly being monitored, so if anything, you know, comes up, we have people that can easily access the site. AEP will also have direct access to the site. They'll have their own roads, or they'll have access on our roads to getting in the property, their own gate code, so they'll, they'll be, and they'll have, you know, a transformer of theirs that'll be onsite.
Second question, we are prone to flooding occasionally?
Yes, sir.
How does something like this stand up to, say, two or three feet of water?
So we have retention, let's go back. It's a little hard to see, but here on the east side of the property, we have retention, where it's gonna, it, I can't remember exactly how big that, that pond's going to be, but it was approved, or was viewed in the Planning and Zoning Meeting. So, yeah, we're, we're confident that it's not going to cause any more flooding with that retention than it would prior to construction.
And my last question, how, security-wise, if somebody was inclined to go in there and tamper or something, I mean, I assume this is tied in to an alarm system somewhere?
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And even if the city wasn't wanting a wall there, all of our projects have security fences, or bar wire, or chain-link bar wire surrounding the facility.
Thank you.
I have a question. Did you consider having this further down on Grimes Road, rather than on this major thoroughfare?
We did not. We originally reached out to those landowners, and we just aligned with a, with a deal that was favorable for everybody. They've been wanting to sell that property for five years, and haven't been successful at that, and so it, it, it worked out well. But as I was saying, these are very site-specific projects, where proximity to the substation is very important. So that's where, you know, this aligned very well with, with this kind of project, that, that specific parcel. I'd say we have, you know, 20 to 30, 20, 20 to 25 projects inside of ERCOT, inside Texas, and 95% of them are directly adjacent to the substation. So that's, that's very important to us, and it's very much appreciated by the utility company.
So did you purchase this property already, or is it contingent upon the SUP?
Right, yes, ma'am. It's, it's contingent on, on the SUP. We put our contract beginning of 2022, and we just extended another 12-month option, where we have an agreement paying the landowner consideration for, for the extensions. But they're, they're wanting us closed early, and we're happy to do that, just once, once we get past this next step, so.
I have another question. Seems like you've been doing this for some time with, with your company. Is there any similar sites that are already up and running, that are not, you know, in the construction phase, or, you know, preliminary phases, that you can show that is similar to ours, and what that generates in, in terms of taxes? I just, I really want to understand, and this is, I'm not in this space, so I can't, I can't visualize how much, you know, once you have everything in place, and you mentioned earlier, I think you said $5 million, but over, was that over a period of 10 or 20 years?
That was over 20 years, yes.
And are you getting those figures from other properties that you already have, and that you can show us, maybe like, say, hey, you know, in, in Dallas, we have this, and it's similar in, in scope and size?
Yes. So how we came up with those numbers is we have a tax consultant. We use Katie Andrews for all of our projects. And prior to going through financing with these projects, you have to have this done. It's a in-depth, you know, three-page spreadsheet that shows breakdown of the taxes, depreciation, showing, you know, in detail, the taxes that go to ISD, City of Harlingen, Cameron County, any of the AHJs that we're having to deal with. So it's a very, very, and I'm happy to, to share that, but yeah, it's a very in-depth.
That would be great. So is this, so you have others that are already existing, that are not in these preliminary phases, that is already up and running, that you can show a comparison, so that way we can see what that would generate?
Yeah.
Of course, our, our rates will be different, and depending geographically, it may, it may change, but something that we can see that you've already completed?
Are you saying completed construction?
Yes.
Okay. So Black Mountain Energy Storage started in beginning of 2020, and we have, I mean, we hired in a bunch of people from various, like Key Capture, Apex, a lot of various energy storage companies that have a lot of experience. And so Black Mountain's a fairly, Black Mountain Energy Storage, Black Mountain's been around for, for quite a while. But the energy storage side is built up of energy storage professionals that have built these projects out. As far as, you know, under the Black Mountain umbrella, not yet, but we do have 20 to 25 projects that are...
In the works?
In the works. Yes, ma'am. A lot, some, a lot further along than this, where, you know, in the next, we've already started procurement of, of the batteries, and, you know, looking at starting to move dirt in the next few months, so.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So I just quickly want to highlight the, you know, the interest in, in the city and the EDC to grow the industrial park to the, to the east of our project site. And we've noticed on a lot of our projects, it's very encouraging to a lot of developers to have these facilities in close proximity. So although it's, you know, transmission is a regional infrastructure, it immediately responds to the nearest issues in the grid. So, for example, you have a blackout issue, and it's in an industrial park that's recently developed, in the east side of, of the, the battery. And the power outage might be a transmission line that's down, coming from all the solar that's coming into, solar and wind that's coming into City of Harlingen. You're able to, you're, you're directly connected to a, a generating power source. So if you're farther away, there's more likely of a chance that you're, that's going to be the issue, where you're not connected to it, and you're, the further you are away, the less, the, the greater chance you're not going to be directly connected to the facility. So it is encouraging to, you know, both the airport and industrial growth for the area. This is just a quick summary on kind of what I explained about proximity to, to the airport, and encouraging development surrounding the battery that will, you know, likely increase the, you know, the busyness of the airport for, for cargo and passengers coming in. Kind of what Javier explained, expansion of the city utilities across our property, which will obviously encourage the growth, or the development of the corner lot of Grimes and 499. And that's it. Happy to answer any more questions that you all have.
Does the commission have any questions? Yes, but one second. Is there any other questions for the applicant? Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you all very much.
Yes.
Thank you again. You all know I love Harlingen very much, with all my heart, just as much as you all do. And I think the dangling carrot is this potential sales tax, tax revenue for our city. But between, just right now, again, you can see where the hesitation is. We were told $5 million, $500,000 to $600,000 a year in taxes to our city per year. Now, Mr. Ditto just said it's $5 million over 20. Well, that's $250,000. There's a big difference. Why, why is this so uncertain, unsure? Mr. Cervantes said $500,000 to $600,000 per year. Now, we're down to 220, 250. So I, I think that that dangling carrot is just, it's not solid enough. If they have reports from tax consultants saying, this is what the tax revenue is going to be for your city, then let's see that. That should be something we should really want to see. Those are the answers I couldn't get in the public, the P&amp;Z Commission hearing, exactly what, what is that revenue going to be over 20 years, especially with depreciation. Never alone the aesthetics, the lack of jobs, lack of sales tax potential, everything else. And maybe the EDC needs to hire better consultants on the retail side, to see if we can do something better than just put our hands up in the air. Thank you very much again for your time.
Thank you. Is, is Robert here, or is Robert here today? I don't see him.
He was at work. I don't see him here, Mayor. Did you have a question that maybe you passed?
Yeah, I just wanted to see if we knew what the taxes... Yeah, I just wanted to see if we knew what the taxes we're generating just on the vacant land right now.
It's probably going to be farmland, so it's almost going to be insignificant.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Sure, you're welcome to come on up. So, and I think I kind of, before you address the commission, you had mentioned that you do have these reports, and you'd be happy to share those with the commission?
Absolutely.
Okay. Because I think that's something that I'd like to, I'd like to see, just so, and, sorry, Robert, I guess it was not necessary. I apologize. I'd like to see that, just so that I can have a better understanding of, you know, what this could potentially generate. And since I'm, you know, I'm going to be honest, I'm new to this, I don't know. I want to make sure that we're making the right decision for our community.
Absolutely.
And we do understand that it's not going to generate jobs. I understand, you know, all of the arguments. But really, truly, I want to know, what is this going to generate in terms of property taxes? Because if property taxes are sufficient or high enough that it's going to be able to contribute to our general fund where we can be able to provide services to our community, then that's definitely a benefit. However, if it's not, then that is a little concerning. So if you could provide those reports, how soon could you get those to?
We already have them.
Okay.
And although it does, we don't have, you know, employees operating the site locally, it does generate jobs. And it's through the expansion of the industrial growth to the east where we're planning a lot of development. So it does. And to address, you know, the discrepancy that he said about the taxes, Mr. Cervantes is right in that, you know, it will be, you know, the 550, 600,000 per year. But what I was addressing at the beginning of the presentation is that the depreciation, if we kept the same batteries for 20 years, is what I was explaining, that's, you know, where it would go down to 250,000 average. But, you know, as I was explaining, you know, we might come in and, you know, have to put in new batteries to replace old ones, which will obviously drive the cost back up.
Question. What's the exact address? I'm on the Cameron County appraisal district site.
The address for the project site?
Yes.
The property ID 72484.
Oh, you already looked it up. Okay. Yeah, that's three of us searching. You win. So what is the current tax generated on that farmland?
Robert's here now.
I believe it's exempt.
Is there, and I know that you went twice, right? You've mentioned before the P&amp;Z, or Javier had mentioned, I can't recall. But is there a reason why you didn't provide those reports to the commission so that they could review it and in turn make a recommendation?
The tax report was never asked.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
3,235.
Do you want to run that number again, please?
Sorry?
3,235. They changed their website around, so it's a little learning, but.
At this point, because there are some, some question marks as far as how much, we're looking at potential revenues, I'd like to make the motion to table this and get those numbers from you. All right? So the mayor and we can all be at the same level and understand exactly how much revenues are going to be generated.
Absolutely.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. I need to close the public hearing, guys.
Sorry about that.
Gentlemen. So, Mr. Ditter, we can really get back on this really quickly at the next meeting, hopefully, and take it off the table and to make a decision. But I encourage you to get those reports, if you already have them, just as quick as you can, to Mr. Cervantes, and then he can make it, you know, so that they come to us, so we can review it. And then we'll be in a better position to, you know, move forward, or at least, you know, make a decision on this, so that way you're not waiting. We do appreciate you taking the time, and the presentation was very helpful in answering our questions. So I do appreciate your time and for, you know, choosing Harlingen. So thank you so much.
Absolutely.
At this time, is there anyone else that would like to, would you like to speak, sir? Go ahead.
If I could just ask you to send them to Javier Cervantes, and then he can forward them to me and I get them to the commission.
Thank you, sir. Just state your name.
I, Tom Kibrel, 1621 Fairfield Court. I'm actually here for a completely different reason. I learned about this tonight. But I have an old man's perspective on this. I remember that property, when it was owned by the Grays 40 years ago, nobody's ever won of that land. We, on 106, when we built that industrial complex for through the loom, we doubled the size of that road, and the caliche under that road is six feet thick. And then we built a water treatment plant. We never got one penny of tax money from that investment. And I know that we don't get jobs and stuff like that, but there's a lot of stuff that we also don't get. We don't get any freshwater use. We don't get any sewage processing. And if anybody has driven on 509 and seen what the port is costing us in the repairs we're going to have to do to that road, it's offsetting itself. This looks like a pretty good investment to me as a person who commutes on that road every single day. I don't mind a brick wall there. Some of the other businesses there are not particularly aesthetically pleasing. And I do believe that the number one reason why we don't have more commerce out there is because the lights are inverse. Priority is given to the sides. If you're coming through in a truck, you stop at every single light. Trucks are not going to go through there. They, trucking is computer-controlled now, and any deviance like that is immediately noticed in the software, and they avoid that route. That's why you don't have any industrial traffic on there. So I don't have any problem with that. But there is one thing that I think we really, as a city, need to get, is a guarantee when this thing is done, that they promise to remove all of that equipment, including the batteries. And if they don't promise to remove all of it, if we don't have that in writing, I say no go. Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir. Is there anyone else wishing to speak for or against? Having no one else here to speak for or against the adoption of this ordinance, we will now close the public hearing.
Now the motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make the motion to table this item.
One second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item five, public hearing and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading rezoning from multifamily residential district to general retail district for an 8.53 acre tract of land out of the south half of block 23, Lonsey Hills subdivision located along the east side of FM 1427 approximately 2,520 feet south of Expressway 77. And the applicant in this case is Santiago Espinoza. Javier?
Yes, Mayor, we have a property along the east side of FM 1427, about half a mile south of Expressway 77. So this property here is owned multifamily residential, and the applicant is proposing a general retail district to develop the front part as commercial and the back portion as apartments. Here's a survey of the property. So it's a large tract of land. It has a structure in the corner. There's an interest for a commercial development right now. So as you can see, it's vacant, a structure in the corner, the Bonita Park apartment complex, which is a project of the Harlingen Housing Authorities to the north and east. And then you have small commercial businesses along the west side of FM 1427. Photo of the property, the structure that is located there. In the land use plan, it calls for residential, but the roadway is five lanes and very conducive to commercial development. In the public hearing, no one spoke in opposition, and the applicant spoke in support of his request, and the board recommended approval unanimously.
Is there any questions for Javier? Okay, we are now open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak for or against the adoption of this ordinance? Having no one here to speak for or against, we'll close the public hearing. And no other questions for Javier? Okay, so I'll ask this city attorney to read the ordinance.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of Harlingen, rezoning from multifamily residential district M2 to general retail GR district for an 8.53 acre tract of land out of the south half of block 23, Lonsey Hills subdivision, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregone.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item six, public hearing and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading rezoning from a single-family residential district to office district for a property located at 1605 New Combs Highway bearing a legal description of lots 11 and 12, block 1, RA Pittman subdivision, and the applicant is Andy Vixto.
Yes, Mayor, this is a property right here. It's at the northwest corner of New Combs Highway and Pittman. And they're proposing to change the zoning from single-family residential to office. Here's the subdivision plot. It's a two lots. It's an older subdivision. There is a building in the property. It belongs to a church. That's the aerial photo with the existing buildings. Land use map calls for single, for loading said residential, but New Combs Highway is a 60-foot road, which makes it conducive to office zoning. This is what the office zoning allows. So it gives you more flexibility for development. The planning and zoning commission had a public hearing, and no one spoke in opposition, and they recommended approval unanimously.
So any questions for Javier? Okay, we'll now open the public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak for or against the adoption of this ordinance? Having no one here to speak for or against, we'll close the public hearing. And at this time, I'll ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of Harlingen, request a rezon from single-family R1 residential district to office O district for a property located at 1605 New Combs Highway bearing a legal description of lots 11 and 12, block 1, RA Pittman subdivision number two, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregone.
Make a motion to approve.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Javier. Item seven, public hearing and possible action to amend year 47, 2021 to 2022, one-year action plan to reallocate funds from the CDPG general administration activity in the amount of $174,755.93 to the street lighting project.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This, as you know, the City of Harlingen is an entitlement community for CDPG funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Every year, we receive funding from HUD for community development projects. By statute, we are allotted 20% of, for general administration of the grant. Through the years, there's been money left over for various reasons, either vacancies in the department or anything else. So we are at the point where we have $174,755.93 left. This is from last year, and this is because through the years, we use funding from previous years. So we're only allowed to use 20% of the current year's allocation. So we will not ever be able to use this, not because we don't need it. In fact, in previous years, we've had to either sometimes lay someone off or transfer them to another department because we're not able to use more than 20% for general admin. So we're here today through direction of our city management and through our board. They are recommending to allocate this funding to a street lighting project. At this point, we haven't identified the areas where the lighting will take place. But this is a public hearing. We have heard from several commissioners, some ideas as to where lighting is needed in low-income areas, of course. The public hearing is for the community to voice their needs. Also, we would like to hear from you all in the coming months as to where you all would like to see lighting in low-income areas, if, of course, if this is approved. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer. We did have a public hearing already with our board on February the 20th. This does require a substantial amendment because the lighting project was not initially an activity in our action plan for that year. So it does require a substantial amendment, which requires two public hearings. The public hearing on February 20th, we did not have any public comments. We have a public comment period of 30 days. It started on February the 17th, and it will end on March 23rd. That is a little more than 30 days, but we are allowing that time for public comment.
Any questions?
Will these be sodium vapor or LED?
We would like to see LED, yes. In fact, we might recommend some replacements as well. I am currently working with Arnold Campos from Public Works. He's a traffic, traffic, lighting.
Call him a guru.
Right, lighting guru, yes. And of course, with the police department as well.
In anticipation of this agenda item, I've pulled the crime maps for the past three years. Commissioner Morales, you and I would be probably the prime locations for these lights.
Yes, I agree. I'm aware of that one.
So I already asked Gabe to forward to Sandy if we approve this, those maps, so that we can collectively look at where we need to put those lights.
For future reference or maybe off of this one, can we add some sidewalks when we don't have any in this particular areas? Not much, just enough to get by.
With this funding?
Yes.
No, this would have to just be for street lights, Commissioner, because that's what the agenda item calls for.
Okay.
If you wanted sidewalks, we'd have to go back and do the entire process again for whatever portion you wanted for sidewalks.
Street lights are the priority here. Don't worry. It will be street lights.
Was there any other questions from the commission? Thank you so much. At this time, we'll open it for a public hearing. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak for or against the adoption of this ordinance? Having no one here to speak for or against, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll ask the city attorney to read the caption.
There's no caption.
There's no caption.
No? It's an ordinance.
Number seven.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm reading the wrong one. I wore my glasses. It's not an ordinance. Okay. So do we have a motion for this wonderful project?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, public hearing and possible action to amend year 48, 2022 to 2023, one-year action plan to eliminate the Sunshine Haven activity of 20,000 and fund additional 12,500 to Loaves and Fishes and 7,500 to Area Aging Agency, I'm sorry, on aging project.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners again. This item is the request to reallocate funding from the Sunshine Haven activity. This is actually this current year. What happened is that we did not receive the sub-receivable agreement on time for this activity, and so we went to our board, and they recommended to reallocate the funding to 12,500 to Loaves and Fishes. So they had already been allocated $15,000, so with the additional 12,500, this would get them at 27,500, and an additional 7,500 to Area Agency on Aging. Area Agency on Aging was allocated 12,500 during the action plan period, and so this would get them at 20,000. We did have a public hearing. Again, this is a substantial amendment because we would be eliminating an activity from our action plan. So we did have a public hearing on February the 20th. We had someone from Area Agency on Aging there to make a comment. Of course, it was in favor of the allocation, and Ms. Lucio, the executive director from Sunshine Haven, also sent in a comment on behalf of Area, I mean, I'm sorry, on behalf of Sunshine Haven. Again, there's a 30-day comment period for the same time, which ends on March 23rd, 2023.
Are you still within the 15% cap for public service?
Yes, the 20, yes. That's why they went ahead and requested the allocation to take place within the public service agencies.
Is there any, I'm sorry, is there any questions from the commission? Okay, at this time, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak for or against this item? Having no one here to speak for or against, we'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Item nine, consideration and possible action to approve a facility use agreement between the City of Harlingen and South Texas Little League for the use of the youth baseball fields at Pendleton Park and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement. Javier?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, City Commission. For the record, my name is Javier Mendez, the Parks and Rec Director. This league had submitted all their paperwork to us. We took it to the park advisory board, and they recommended approval. We have all the documents, like I mentioned, their insurance, their bylaws, everything in, in our office, and everything is current. Staff recommends approval.
So they're, they're a 501(c)(3)?
Yes, sir.
And they filed their 990?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Item 10, consideration and possible action to approve the proposed 911 coordinates project for the Arroyo Colorado hike and bike trail presented by Valley Offroad Bicycling Association. Javier?
Yes, again, Mayor, City Commission, my name is Javier Mendez, Parks and Rec Director for the record. I have Tom with me from the Valley Offroad Bicycling Association. He's going to take over the presentation, but just to kind of give you an overview, this project here is, I think Border Patrol, federal government has done something like this, and so we, they want to bring it to, to Harlingen for the safety of the users on our trails. There's about 10 miles of trails that they've cleared along the Arroyo, which is not on the paved area, and so it's off the paved area, and so in order for an emergency first responder to get to them, they really need to know where they're at, and so that's what this project is proposing, and I think it's a really good idea. Steph has met with them on several occasions, and Steph really recommends we move forward with this, but I'm going to turn it over to Tom to present it.
Hello again, for the record, Tom Kimbrel, 1621 Fairfield Court, also the Harlingen Area Trail Steward, or one of them for Borba. Next slide, please. Prior to, oh, I can use that, okay, thank you. Prior to retiring from the Border Patrol, I was part of the Missing Migrant Program, and we noticed that, well, I noticed that the EMS services were sent to the wrong location because the telephone system that the cellphone is using is not accurate in rural areas. The problem that we have at the Arroyo is going to be the topography or the shape of it. It's going to cause the same problem that we would. So what we're going to have is the person will dial 911 on their cellphone, and the system will not get an accurate location for it. So the, the solution with the Border Patrol was to, to create these signs right here, and it's a little hard to see here, but along the bottom here is a serial number, and that becomes a registered 911 address. And we've already, we've been, spent the day today arranging the proper people to make that happen with the 911 system. So what would, what do we get from that? Well, we did with the Border Patrol, we find these two young men, they're brothers, Honduran, and the younger of the two is the exact same age as my younger son. These two boys were the first ones rescued by the system on Wednesday, and my son was married on, my younger son was married on Saturday, so they'll always be a special day for me. Since then, that's spread all the way to the Pacific Ocean, and there are hundreds of thousands of these signs out here, and there's been thousands of rescues. So we know that it works. And the reason why it works is, if you imagine that you were in one of these rural areas and you needed some help, what would your description be? Well, I'm on the trail, we've got 10 miles already, and that's going to continue. Next to a ski tree, across from a practice. So you can see how that's going to be an issue, right? And we're not just worried about the trail itself, because you should know that there are walkers, runners, and bicyclists all using these trails. It's also the paper trail. So imagine that you're, you're near one of the bridges, and you have an issue. The two main things that I'm concerned about personally are the heat and heart conditions that are undiagnosed. Those are the things that worry me. And you say you're at the bridge, there are six, and the problem for the EMS and the fire department when the door responds is, where are you going to go and park to get down there? Very different route, one side of the bridge to the other. Very different staging area, very different location that you'll have to go to. The next thing that is going to happen, because some of these trails, is there's going to be portions where a person will need to be carried. Now, having done this personally, one of the most strenuous things that I've ever done, and I've been in some of the ragged places in the military where, the extreme examples of that, it is extraordinarily difficult, and it requires training, and it requires equipment. So the first thing that we want to do is, we want to get the first responders out there. We want to get EMS out there, we want to get the fire department out there, and actually train going to each one of these separate locations that we are going to identify out there. We're proposing to start off at about 40 locations throughout the trail system, and when they're out there doing their training, they're going to find equipment. This strap goes all the way from his shoulder all the way down, and is actually what's holding the, this is called a Stokes Basket. Otherwise, it is your hand. And if anybody's carrying a bucket of water more than 20 feet, you know what I'm talking about. So this is equipment I expect, this is the kind of equipment that I expect to be identified for them, that they can buy in advance. So if we do have somebody that already has it. So these are some of the main areas where the trails are. So you have Business 77 over here, and you have the expressway over here, and you see that we have five main areas that are already developed. The paved hike and bike now goes all the way over to Dixieland, and we intend on making off-road trails next to it, and the long-range plan is to go from Hugh Ramsey all the way out to 509, which would give us the same, or approaching the amount of trail that you would have in Bentonville, Arkansas. Bentonville, Arkansas has turned into a mecca. You can't even buy a house there at any price, because they have, they've turned into B&amp;Bs all over mountainous. I believe we're going to have some, some of our city folks go out and find how that city did that, so that we can try and repeat that here. It is already a draw for northern Mexico and the entire valley, because I run into people all the time, and I run into people out there trying it out, as far away from Austin, Houston, Corpus, they're all coming down to try just the section that we have So this is the, it's called a PSEP, it's where the 911 operator sits. So what we want to do by creating actual 911 addresses is, on this station here, when that address comes up, there is an annotation block, and for, we want the, the actual first responders being the EMS or the fire department or the police department to make their own notes, so the training and the supervisors or the administration can make the call, if you will, about how that will be handled. First of all, where are they going to park? What is the staging area? What equipment are they going to bring? And all of those things can be put in that note, so that when this call comes in on the weekend, and all of those administrative people are not there, their direction is already in the, in associated with the call automatically. We also want to improve the, the trail signage. We have some that are very similar to this. We want to improve over this because we've had some vandalism problems with this particular model. We do have some ideas. The main thing here is that everybody needs to be going the same direction. The only real problem we might have with safety is when we get people going in opposite directions. So we want to try and, and make it clear which, which way everyone should be going. The other thing that we do is we color code. We have easier sections and we have more difficult sections. We don't have any really hard sections, and we don't have any out there, but some are physically more difficult and do require a little bit more skill than others. We are working towards having a easy option every time, but there's only one of them, so it's going to take me some time. I just completed one of them. So these are the proposed signs that we have for you. If you don't like these, Javier has made these, Javier came up with these. Excellent, I like them. But what you find is, this right here, the alpha-nevaric combination right here becomes the address, and that is recorded in the system, and we're going to have a photograph it up in the 911 center, and so they can tell the person over the phone, they can describe what this looks like, tell me the number on it, and when they punch that number in the computer, automatically, all of the information is populated. The GPS coordinates, the place to park, the staging area, the equipment to bring, all of that's, all of that. Many, many years ago, when I was a Harlingen police officer, I was trying to treat a nine-year-old boy with chest, gunshot wounds to his chest, and I stopped the radio transmission and asked for EMS to listen to me directly. And I gave them the situation in their language, and they told me later that they were able to leave the ambulance with the gear that they needed, and they felt like that it made the difference in that voice line. I'm just trying to repeat that same lesson here. If, if you had to take all the equipment back to the vehicles, drive all the way around the expressway, and come all the way back in to Seabody Wood Park, where you should have went the first time, to be right next to where this person is, it's all wasted time, all time lost from the voting hour. Anything you want to add? Anyone have any questions for me?
Bravo.
Yeah, it's fantastic.
Javier, how are we going to pay for the signage to get installed?
The light money's taken, all right?
Out of CDBG? No. We would, we would take it out of our, our budget. I think we've, Mondo was able to get some quotes. It's going to run us about 3,000 for all 40 signs, and so one other thing that I wanted to add is, is that, so each one of these signs, like, like Tom mentioned, is going to have a number, so it's going to indicate an address, and so they're going to create, Dom is going to create a GPS location for each one of those. The city's going to set up the address, and then we're going to get that address shared with 911, so that they can put it on their, on their system. But going back to your question, Gabe, we will pay for the signs out of our budget.
Stack has already been brought into the loop on this?
Yes, we have met with Stack, with Reenie, we have met with Chief Kestner, and also with the Fire Chief Valdeta.
Actually, Mr. Pettis wanted to be here tonight, but he had to take a flight. He wanted to show the circuit.
We just have to pick one of these three options, the signs?
Yeah, so whatever y'all like, we can, or change it.
I think y'all should decide, let them decide what they want.
It's your job, dude.
Yeah, I mean, you're doing all the work, and so.
Quick question on the colors, are there, so when someone is, like, saying trouble, they're going to, like, be calling out the color too, or just a number?
Just a number.
Okay, cool. Because I was going to say, to take in consideration the people that are colorblind like myself, so stick away, stay away from the red and greens. But no, I think this is a great idea, and I commend you for your passion and dedication to this. This is great.
How many signs is the 3,000 going to bring in?
Forty.
Forty?
Forty signs. And so what we did was, we also included the, the additional mileage of trail that we have, so.
I think it's a phenomenal idea. Thank you so much for the teamwork and doing all your due diligence and having all the answers to our questions. I was sold before you even started the, the presentation, but now, I, I'm glad that you, you spent the time so that we can see this. I would urge the commission to just allow them to do their thing and, and decide which sign is, is best also, just, I mean, it looks like your heart is in, in, you're passionate about this, and we'd like for you all to be able to, or at least I would ask the commission to, to consider letting them just run with it and decide which one is best.
Y'all make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Thank you so much. All right.
Mayor, you know that in the back of the room, we've got a bunch of people here, animal shelter, I don't know if you want to, how can I get them out of here?
Okay, and that is, what number?
17.
Okay. So we're going to take things a little out of order. We'll go and, we're going to jump to item 17, out of courtesy for all of those folks that are here waiting patiently, thank you so much. Item 17, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading amending sections of the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinance, Chapter 6, Article 4, Animal Control, Division 1, Generally, Section 6-117. Definitions, removal of Division 1 Dog, Dogs and Cats subdivision, license, Section 6-167. License required, exception, 6-168. Proof of vaccination required for issuance of Section 6-169. Issuance fees, Section 6-170. Disposition of fee, Section 6-171. Term of license, Section 6-172. Revocation, Section 6-173. Tags not transferable. Amending, Section 6-202. Procedure for impoundment and removing. Some wording on Section 6-203. Redemption of impounded animal, vicious dog. Section 6-204. Destruction of unredeemed animal, certain animals to be released only to the keeper, and this was tabled at the last meeting, so we needed.
I'll make a motion to take this off the table and put it back in action.
Second.
Right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so it's now off the table, and one more time.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commission. My name is Shannon Harville, I'm the interim director for the Health Director. This, again, was tabled at our last meeting. It's to pretty much take off the city license and just stay with the microchip. City licenses can be lost relatively easy. Microchips, once they're implanted, cannot be lost. Our Animal Shelter Advisory Committee has discussed this multiple times and is recommending it. In fact, the majority of the committee is here tonight. One of the gentlemen was requested to come up and speak, and he actually printed out a little pamphlet for y'all that he would like us to hand to you, but if you would like to hear from him, he'd be more than happy to let you know the committee is in support.
Is it necessary? Does the commission need to hear? I know you've been waiting patiently. I know you've been waiting patiently, we appreciate it. I don't, I think that we have, everyone has read their packet, and is there any questions?
I think just the one change I'd make is on the fourth, whereas it references the Harlingen Humane Society, I think y'all changed your name, right? That's the one change I'd make, that's about it.
Thank you so much for the willingness to present, and we will take the, the packets just because they've already been, been made. Thank you so much. And so, if I understand this correctly, this was, by both boards have been, have been briefed on this, okay, wonderful. Alright.
This is now the standard, guys, we need to stand up.
Unless you're saving lives, it's, it's okay.
Yeah, trees, yeah, unless you're saving lives.
Okay, and so...
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
The amendments, subject to that one minor change.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Thank you again, all of you, for being here today, we appreciate your hard work and your commitment, and, um, thank you, and for waiting. Item eleven, consideration and possible action to authorize a change order to the PO eighty-four eight-five-nine for the addition of three fire hydrants, sixty-eight thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty-three cents, and an electrical gate, twenty-one thousand two hundred and fifty, and the total amount of eighty-nine thousand five hundred and thirteen sixty-three, to be located at the Harlingen Training Center burn building. And Chief Valderras.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission, and for the record, I like the red, uh, sign. It's a good idea, by the way. You have before you a request to authorize a change order for the installation of three fire hydrants and an electrical gate at our Harlingen Training Center. The total cost of the change order is eighty-nine thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty-three cents. This project is being funded with ARPA monies, and staff recommends approval.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor...
If you don't mind.
Yes.
Sure.
When you first started this, the, the original contract was for three hundred and nineteen thousand six hundred and fifty-four and change. Since then, you're looking at, with this change order, including this change order, everything, the, the change orders, one, two, three, and four, has increased it by a hundred and twelve thousand four hundred and sixty-three. Why so much?
I'm gonna refer that to our engineer, he's the one that's taking care of the contract.
So, the reason that we're here is because the overall change order value is going above the 25% of the contract value. The first two change orders were within the, the scope of work, and the first one, the first one was for lime, additional lime for the, for the soils. That was additional because of the, the testing lab results. So, we executed change order number one, and then number two was for additional rebar to connect the proposed road to the, an existing concrete sidewalk. Excuse me. So that, that was like twenty-two thousand and change for the two first change orders. Then, change order number three was outside of the project scope, and that was for the fire hydrants and also the gate.
We, we did ask Water Works if they would install the hydrants for us, and they said they didn't have the capability to do that, so they asked us to hire somebody, so that's why we went out and hired somebody to do it for us. And, and the hydrants are for training purposes for the burn unit, so they, they, they still, they can still provide water if anything happens to the building, but the primary purpose is for the students to use them when they're training at the burn unit.
I understand that. Here's, here's another question mark. From the change order number three to change, change order number four, we start off with, I'm reading the original, some kind of, original contract sum with three nineteen and change, the previous change orders were for sixty-eight thousand and change. So we're looking, I'm looking at the change order number four. That grant total is four...
Yeah.
This is four nineteen, but it, shouldn't it be three twenty-six?
That sixty-eight thousand is, is, it should be ninety-one thousand. The reason it's not ninety-one thousand is because the twenty-two thousand from change order number one and two are not there. So that, that's, that's the explanation of that number, it should've been nine, ninety-one thousand. See, if you go to change order number three, is the previous page?
Yep.
Says net change by previously authorized change orders, that's one and two, for twenty-two thousand?
Got it.
Right, so if you add that amount to sixty-eight thousand, that should be ni- ninety-one thousand, right? And that, that would make the math right, I guess.
Okay.
So in total, it's four change orders, the two first change orders were part of the project scope, and, and in essence, because it was changes in the, the soils, we needed more lime, and we needed more rebar, and then the third change order, not only was outside the project scope, but it also went above the 25% value of the con- contract.
I, I, I see the numbers, I, I can agree with that. Just one, why didn't you see this, why didn't you notice this beforehand?
What exactly? The first, the first change orders or...
The lime and the, and the rebar that you're gonna use.
Okay, so, the, the first one, we assume a quantity for the lime needed, but it was under, and we didn't have a testing done beforehand. So when the project started, we had a testing lab run some tests, and those tests resulted in additional lime. And, and testing is done to make sure that the, the payment is done right, and...
I, I can, I can relate to the testing.
And then, if, if you have, did, did you also have that question for change order number two?
No, I, I see the math.
Okay.
Okay, now I'm questioning, you know, why didn't you do the testing before the whole shebang started? Because, I mean, I'm seeing a hundred and twelve thousand in change orders, and it could've been done a little bit slightly better, had you done the testing beforehand, and, and we would not be doing these change orders. You see where I'm coming from?
No.
Do the soil testing first, as you're doing this...
No, because change, the, these change orders for the fire hydrants and the gate would've pushed the change order limit more than 25%, if my math's right, right now, and they're also outside of the project scope. So initially, we didn't have any water, lime installations, nor fire hydrants, and no gate.
Okay. Well, I guess what I'm trying to get to is this, had you done the testing ahead of time, okay, you would've realized you needed more lime, correct?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, if you start off firsthand, and, and then we'll take you from there, once you do the testing, you're gonna need more lime, more work, more manpower, more rebar. So instead of us, whenever we started off with this three nineteen, it could've been three and a quarter, or three thirty.
The rebar was, was a separate issue. The, the lime was needed because we hired the testing lab when the, after the NTP was issued to the contractor.
Okay.
When we started the project, Commissioner, these were just estimates. We, we didn't know until we'd actually go out and do some of these tests what the actual cost would be. So they were in-house estimates, and we kind of estimated, and we came pretty close. The original estimate didn't include the, the, the gate, that's something that, that Fire had asked for, so we had ARPA money available, so we did it, and then the fire hydrants were not part of the initial estimate. We were hoping that Water Works would've just done them for us, but they made us go out and hire somebody because they didn't have the expertise, so that's why we had the, had the cost.
What's that?
Good.
Yep.
Thank you, Luis.
My motion's...
Thank you, Chief, we appreciate you waiting patiently, patiently. We already have a motion for approval, and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post.
Thank you.
Motion carries, thank you. Item twelve, consideration and possible action to authorize the city manager to enter into an MOU between the City of Harlingen and the Lower Rio Grande Valley Development Council to continue the RGV Metro Express program. Gabe?
Mayor, members of the commission, this is a service that we're currently providing with the, the Development Council. This is a service that provides bus routes to anyone from Edinburgh to McAllen to Harlingen to Braswell and Port Isabel. The cost this year for us is forty-nine thousand sixty-two dollars for the upcoming year, it's proposing to go to fifty thousand ninety-nine dollars and ten cents. So we are recommending approval of the, the MOU.
Gabe, on this one, so I understand that this agreement's for across cities, right?
Yes.
But then, when you go to their website, they have like Route Forty and Route Forty-One, which are within the city, right? One is for retail, one's for medical, correct?
Uh, yes, that's a different service, though.
Okay, that's completely different.
Completely different, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And we also call that the red and the blue routes.
Correct. And who deals with that?
Uh, Valley Metro has that directly, and so, matter of fact, right now, they're still providing the service, but they've been relocated to the Harlingen Field offices, because we're gonna reconstruct that new office for them on T Street. So that's where their office is out of. This one is out of the Development Council, and I believe Edinburgh, and they coordinate different buses that'll bring them from Port Isabel to, eventually, if they need to go all the way to Edinburgh, they can get there.
So if the commissioners wanted to add routes to the red and blue lines, that would be a different contract?
Uh, well, that's a separate agreement, but we would have to meet with Valley Metro to actually do that, to make any alterations.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do you have a motion?
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Item thirteen, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution to encourage the Texas Legislature to direct funds towards broadband deployment. Gabe?
Um, Mayor, we were asked to approve this resolution, so that we could submit it to the state, just as, encourage them to support broadband in, in communities such as ours. I think it's a great idea, we did have a study that was conducted here inside Harlingen, and it showed the need for broadband, for affordable broadband for some of our residents, so this doesn't cost us any money, so we recommend approval of the resolution.
Sold. Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Item fourteen, consideration and possible action to approve the new scheduled date for the downtown improvement district event downtown at sundown from every third Saturday of the month from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM, to every second Thursday of the month from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM for the months of April through September 2023. Alexis?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This was brought to my attention from my executive board and some downtown merchants. On March sixth, we did have a downtown improvement district meeting, and they approved a, a recommendation of switching the monthly event into a seasonal, seasonal one, and also the scheduled date. But at this moment, staff will recommend tabling the item as we further get information from our merchants and community in regards to the schedule change.
Motion to table.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries, this is, this is now tabled. Item fifteen, consideration and possible action to adopt a resolution approving the Harlingen Water Works system to purchase zero point zero two five acres of Lot Nine of the Reese subdivision of Treasure Hills subdivision, Unit One, for replacement of lift station number five. Tim?
Good evening, Mayors, Commissioners, my name is Tim Scoglan, General Manager of Harlingen Water Works System. We have a lift station, number five, that's being upgraded, we have to keep the existing lift station in service while we build the upgraded version, so we, we need property adjacent to the existing location. It's a small piece of property, we took a long time to find out who really was the owner, but we've reached an agreement for the purchase of point zero two five acres and some construction easement that's adjacent to that. By charter, it is a requirement that anytime Water Works purchases property, the City Commission needs to approve. I can go into more details on this one, but appreciate your approval.
I'll make the motion to approve this purchase.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Item sixteen, consideration and possible action to adopt a resolution approving Harlingen Water Works system to purchase Lots Five and Six, Block Seventy of Harlingen Original Townsite for sitting, an emergency generator and parking spaces adjacent to the main office building.
Indeed, our main office building does not have an emergency generator, so we lost power during winter storm Uri. It is our operations center, anytime there's an emergency, so it's really important for us to maintain it, we have our main computer systems that are served out of that building. Our electrical service entrance is at the southwest corner of the building, the most reasonable place to put a generator, because that side of the building is a zero lot line, is to purchase some of the adjacent property from a, a neighboring bank. There's two lots there, Lots Five and Lot Six, to provide the egress for that generator and space for it, we're proposing to, to purchase both of those lots, so that gives us two sides of parking plus the generator and the drive that, that passes through both of those parking aisles. It has been a de facto reality for many years or decades that parking for Water Works, its tenants and perhaps some of its customers, has defaulted to that lot. It's not monitored, it's not heavily used, the bank does not have a whole lot of capacity. So to provide for that property and for some, and to basically secure our right to that parking, it, it all wraps into one project, so we've asked the bank for the ability to purchase those two. We've had a negotiation process, the original value appraisal came in at forty thousand, the negotiation led to a fifty-five thousand dollar agreement, that's been recommended by our attorney and approved by our board, so we're also asking for the City Commission's approval for that deal to be finalized.
Motion to...
Go ahead.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Thank you so much, Tim.
Thank you.
And we've already taken up seventeen, leads us to item eighteen, board appointments and removal. Start with, Commissioner?
No, ma'am.
I do have a few. I have Jessica Beatriz Wagner for Healthy Harlingen, and Ana Viegas, also Healthy Harlingen.
Brittany McCorkle for Animal Shelter Advisory Committee.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to replace Sarang Jan Jay from the CDBG Board and appoint Pastor Robert Rodriguez, that's one motion. The second motion is to replace Robert Leffwitch from the EDCA Board and appoint Sarang J Ram to that, that position.
Can we do all these together?
Yes.
Okay.
I have two, I would like to put Wandy Cruz on the PNZ, and also like to get Eric Sepulveda to the Healthy Harlingen.
So do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Item nineteen, executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.072 regarding the purchase/lease for value of real estate if the deliberating in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the City of Harlingen in negotiations with a third person regarding some of the following projects and Texas Governmental Code, Section 551.087 regarding commercial and financial information from business prospects with which the city is conducting economic development negotiations, and/or to discuss or deliberate financial or other incentives relating to the following projects, the EDC, A, Project Alphabet, B, Project Italy, C, Project SBI, and item twenty, also executive session, A, consultation, consultation with city attorney pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071, to receive legal opinion regarding a matter where their legal opinion is protected by the attorney-client communication privilege, and B, consultation with city attorney pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071-1 to receive legal opinion regarding pending litigation, airport litigation. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion carries. Time is now 7:40, and we will be in executive session and be out shortly. Thank you so much. Time is now 8:45 p.m., and we are out of executive session. And, item twenty-one, consideration and possible action regarding items nineteen, A, B, and C is discussed in executive session. We, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, but...
Second?
I needed to say it.
No, it's not.
A motion to proceed forward as discussed.
Okay. Is that enough, Mark?
This one.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. And item twenty-two, consideration and possible action regarding twenty A as discussed in executive session, and we don't have an action item on here, I don't believe. And so, that is all we have. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We are adjourned.